I appoint you to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation under God, in the universal liberty and justice for all.
For your information folks, the fine outdoors.
That was my mistake, I forgot to bring it back, sorry.
Public hearing tonight, Local Law Number Four is going to Rouse's Point, uh, village speed regulations. Open the meeting for comments at this time. There are no one wishing to come at this time, I close the public hearing. Anybody want to make a motion?
You got it. I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, it's a roll call vote.
Can I ask a question, do you want to comment first, I'm sorry. I just think we should remind Chief Craig about our discussion when this first came up about the signage around the village so that we have something that's aesthetically pleasing and not over full blown in terms of changing. So if we might someone could remind him about that. Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote, Trustee Huprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Mayor votes no. I just think it's a waste of money and time. Okay, open the meeting, the comments are public at this time. No one wishing to address the board at this time? Close it at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting, minutes of the previous meeting.
Move we accept, minutes as written.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Huprow, seconded by Trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by user side of aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Bills.
We have no additions or deletions this evening.
Thank you, Arsen.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
Second. Second, uh, motion made by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Huprow. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by user side of aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents.
We have three letters listed in here, four letters listed in here, Senator Elizabeth Osie Little, Sunmount DDSO, Cedar Hedge Nursing Home, and we also received two other letters, one from the Advocacy and Resource Center, ARC, and another one from Janet Kennedy from Lake's Lots. I'm not going to read all of these, but they all have to do with our waterfront and each of their respective agencies are expressing their strong support for the waterfront on to include handicap accessibility to the pier. So all of these are being made part of our package for our grant requests from through DOS and Parks and Recreation. Okay? We have one other piece of correspondence, uh, it was addressed to the mayor and board, dated July 2nd. I would like to request a waiver of the open container law for a family reunion scheduled at the Civic Center on July 31st, 2004, from noon until approximately 8:00 PM. Thank you and it's signed Carol A. Panthea.
Move. Second. Motion by Trustee Huprow, seconded by Trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by user side of aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all I have, so.
Thank you, Phil. Reports of the mayor, trustees, the only thing on my agenda tonight, I requested the executive session to discuss possible litigation.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Penfield. Roll call vote, Trustee Huprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And that's it for me, Trustee Huprow. No, wait, that. Excuse me, sir. I want to express my sincere thanks to Trustee Huprow and his committee, Fourth of July Committee, for one son of a gun of a good job.
Thank you.
And I, I don't want to mention any other names because I'm sure you'll forget some, but, uh, everybody that worked on that did a bang up job, and thank you again. And that's it, now, Trustee Huprow.
No executive sessions tonight, under me, just a report on the Fourth of July celebration that is, is, it's going to be very short, but very, very long. Thank you, you guys, people that helped, the whole village, everybody, and whether you just mowed your lawn and made it look much nicer around, or whatever, we had a heck of a celebration. And, uh, we had our first meeting for the July 4th, 2005 celebration tonight, and our committees are all appointed. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Trustee Huprow. Trustee Penfield.
Uh, the first item that I have tonight is an update on the ongoing sewer project. Um, I know the submissions were made at the, uh, I guess last week to the DEC that we discussed two weeks ago. And John, did you have anything else to offer this evening regarding that, or?
The one thing I would add here is that we made a submission to the Army Corps of Engineers as well, and a walkover with her, she's quite pleased, myself and Doug toured the areas to be disturbed with her, and, uh, she requested a little bit of documentation, but basically was very happy with what she saw. Um, sent that documentation into her following day, I don't know, maybe two days later. And I tried to catch up to her today to see where she was at, but, uh, she apparently wasn't around her phone. The second thing is, um, Aaron Jarvis is here tonight, but perhaps a little better update on, on the sewer project itself. He's the lead engineer on the project, which is totally.
Uh, good evening to everybody. Um, as Kelly mentioned, uh, I believe it was the 29th we made the submission to DEC. At this point, we believe it'll be in the range of four to eight weeks for DEC to review the project, at which point we can prepare bid documents and go to bid. For those of you who have not had a chance to see the plans, I believe we submitted a set to Phil.
Yeah.
And, uh, if anybody else would like a set, I can make some available too. And really, that's all I have for tonight.
Is there any holdups or anything?
Uh, I know DEC is pretty, uh, hot on getting the project going, so I would estimate that Phil will try to do their best to move it along to their end, and that's really, the only holdup we have is to wait for them.
What about the budget thing, like, John, or did you not see what you're not reporting?
Well, I guess there's that, the funding issue, which I believe Phil and John and I are trying to work on, so.
When you expect to go out to bid?
Basically, what we're hoping for, George, was somewhere around the 1st of August.
We got a contractor right here in town, who promised us a bid to get that job, but by the 1st of August, the machinery might be gone.
Well, I mean, I think that would be weird if we could even go out to bid.
Yeah, they, they got to win, too.
Even if the DEC goes closer to four weeks rather than eight, what then happens in terms of what you need from us, Aaron, would it then be at our first or second August meeting that we would authorize to go out to bid, or?
I would estimate the second meeting, uh, to be safe. It really depends on how much kind of time they give us.
You don't do start construction the 1st of October?
Maybe.
You know, maybe, maybe not.
Because if we operate the second meeting of August, you were saying, right, or the 2nd of August?
This should have been out to bid, but as far as I can turn it in January. Yeah, but this year, can't rush the state. It's got nothing to do with the state.
I disagree, the state doesn't.
You couldn't disagree, but.
If the state says no.
That's not the point. I'm not going to discuss it.
So chances are bids would come back in sometime in September?
I would believe that would be reasonable.
I was also speaking with Ernie today as well, and I guess he had spoken to Dominic Fontana, and he, he apparently was very excited with what he had seen so far. And, um, had spoken to Ernie about a couple of minor things, and according to Ernie at least, though, he thought that, that Dominic was almost fairly well finished with whatever part of it.
Well, that's incredible.
And he needed to do, so. Thank you. Um, the second item that I have tonight is the schedule of zoning fees, which came from our codes officer, I believe you all have a copy. And, um, I bring this up for discussion tonight, it's something that we have not done in the past, so this would be something that would be new for fees for applications to the zoning board of appeals. And it's something that apparently, from what Mike has told me, is, is going on in other communities and other municipalities, and, and we're really, um, needing something like this to address what we have with our zoning board.
I don't think we should act on it tonight, we should.
No, and it's simply.
Think about it in the next meeting.
Right, right. And, uh, I don't know if anyone has any comments this evening or not, but. Mike, did this go through the last meeting of the zoning board as well, because I was unable to attend that one?
As far as the fees goes?
Yes.
Um, I think we've mentioned it, and I gave a copy of what I had to Carol, and then she pugged, she, well, she put it out to whoever needed it. But we did talk about it briefly as to why we need the fees.
Okay.
So.
So it's something we could take a look at over the next couple of weeks, and perhaps have a place for maybe if we go on to the next meeting, September 1st or October 1st, something like that.
Same time we did the tour, and.
Yep. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
Okay, the first item I have is a, like, permission for travel authorization for the village justice and the village clerk to go to decent training on July 25th through July 27th.
Second. Uh, motion by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Huprow, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by user side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and I have a report from Chief Craig. Please be advised that from a police point of view, this year's celebration stands out as one of the best we have dealt with in the 20 years I have been here. We only had a couple of minor firecracker complaints that were handled by officers, and a three-day event concluded with no arrests having to be made by this agency. The traffic control for the parade was absolutely the best it has ever been. This year's parade route allowed us to keep the Pratt and Lake Street intersection open during the parade, which kept traffic flowing. With the intersection open, there were no traffic backup during or after the parade. I would like to extend a thank you to all of you that were involved in the organization of this year's event, you did a great job. I met with Chief Craig this afternoon and asked him to go to the cemetery to take some digital pictures of the damage done during the weekend. A number of gravestones were overturned, and I believe this is just a random act of vandalism, and not anyone in the village is being targeted. I met with Andy Gay at the cemetery, and I met with Father Lewis at the rectory. When we find out who's doing a senseless act of vandalism, we will push for serious jail time. The state police took the complaint on Monday. Chief Craig and I discussed a number of issues within the last couple of weeks, and we are all in agreement that it's probably just a random act by some local juveniles. I am very pleased at the way Chief Craig and the police department handled a large amount of people who visited our village, and we had very few incidents this weekend. I'm very happy to report that. I'd also like to take a minute to thank everyone who helped in any way to make the 44th Annual Fourth of July Celebration a huge success. To all our sponsors and our dedicated village employees, thank you for an outstanding job. The fire department did a super job, Bruce and I met a number of times to work through the dispersment of a lot of money. I believe it was money well spent. Every business person I spoke with said they experienced record sales. To make money in the village, you must spend money. What an efficient way to help our local economy by bringing in thousands of vacationers with a pocket full of money. I am extremely proud when I traveled the parade route and saw how much, how much people love Rouse's Point in the summer. I hope we can continue to promote our village, we want new business in the village, and the influx of added revenue from our friends north of the border. We need more help in the fire department. The sportsmen's club is seeking new members who are willing to give back a little bit to the community. I hope to be able to turn it up a notch and follow the lead that Plattsburgh has done in the last couple of years. Thank you for a wonderful weekend, I think it was a good weekend, and really a lot of money. Well, that's all I have to report.
Second, Trustee Jefferson. Trustee Moore.
Yes, one thing for John Carr, an update on the water project and the telemetry equipment.
Uh, hey, first off on the water project, the telemetry system, the contractor, after repeated demands, uh, from our office, it's going to be on site Thursday, rewire entirely the system from the top of the tower. There's obviously something wrong in that section, everything else in the whole system works fine. Um, so hopefully by Friday, things will be done. Well, I wouldn't say done, but hopefully they'll be running smoothly, it'll take a little bit of fine tuning on Gary's chart recorders, but that will hopefully be done, that's my view of Tuesday. Second item on the water project, we conducted this afternoon, a punch list walkover in contract number three, there was about 12 items that I identified with Gary last week. Uh, I believe I was up here on Thursday, last week, reviewed them in detail with contractor and with Eric, and I believe that that's, uh, work should be completed this week. Um, it's kind of a rail heading through those plant people, and I counted those people long enough that if they don't comply this week, we'll probably be asking you to take some, uh, different measures to make sure that work gets done. Third item is, uh, I went through a brief, or, but important, uh, drinking water state revolving loan fund submission with our send today, due to the state on Friday, and I believe that should, uh, operate pretty smoothly. Fourth item is that, uh, myself and Phil met with the minority women's business representative from the state on Thursday, I believe, of last week. Relatively productive meeting, if there is such a thing. I believe he, his concerns are being addressed. Um, got together with Phil and drafted up a lot of, uh, a couple of, uh, contracts to give some timely reporting formats into us so that we can report back to the state and, uh, whatever. In conjunction with that, he gave us some, some hints on beefing up the wording to make sure our contractors on the sewer project are a little better with their paperwork. Um, so a strategy session, I think, with Phil and, and plugging a gap in the funding mechanism. Uh, the fourth thing, I guess I turned it over to Doug, his people then looking over punch list restoration and contract number two, and I'm sure you kind of passed on.
Time the punch list work, uh, we feel that they substantially completed the punch list at this time, we'd like to take a walk through with, uh, a designation with the village that had been, uh, Brian Pelkey, and, uh, so at this point, we'd like to have a appointment with Brian Pelkey to have him walk along Maple Street, walk along the transmission line with us, and make sure that that which is acceptable to us is indeed acceptable to the DPW. And that's the last remaining part of the punch list. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Penfield. No. Thank you, Trustee Moore. Village clerk.
Um, I have one item. Melissa McManus and I completed our fourth training for the Quality's Community Initiative. We went last week, and, uh, at, towards the end of the program or the two-day training last week, um, the first deputy secretary of state was there, uh, in behalf of Randy Daniels, and presented each of the 12 quality communities, uh, with sort of a proclamation, which I'd like to take a moment to read, if I may. "Whereas the Governor's Quality Communities Task Force recommended revitalizing New York's downtowns, main streets, and community centers through a partnership between state agencies and local organizations to create new economic opportunities and improvements to the environment." And "Whereas 12 pilot communities throughout New York State were designated to serve as models for coordinating state and local action." And "Whereas these pilot communities have contributed their enthusiasm, experience, and insight to a series of workshops." And "Whereas the pilot communities participated in quality communities training presented by Empire State Advantage and the National Main Street Center, focusing on building and strengthening local organizations to help sustain revitalization." And "Whereas the pilot communities have joined with their state partner agencies to identify successful public and private models for further action and further." Each of these 12 communities is to be commended for its outstanding contribution to the goals of the New York State Quality Communities Downtown Revitalization Program. Now therefore, I, Randy A. Daniels, Secretary of State, present the certificate of recognition, recognition to the village of Rouse's Point as it continues to celebrate its unique character by developing the capacity to manage change and guide development in partnership with the state of New York. That's wishes for future successes, and it's signed, original signature by Randy A. Daniels. And we have the original of that recognition certificate, and I'd like to have it framed and maybe placed someplace at the board's liking or choosing. It was a, it was a very, very productive, uh, four-part training session for everyone concerned, I think. Melissa will vouch for the fact that we, uh, we gained a tremendous insight and a lot of value, valuable experience. That's all I have.
Thank you, Phil. Arsen.
The only thing I have to report is that, uh, we're done collecting taxes in net, and we're into a penalty period, so the penalty period for July is 5%.
Thank you. Melissa.
Thank you. You were driving past that, maybe, sure.
I knew you were here.
I'm, I'm here to give the board an update on the Quality Communities Project. As Phil said, we, we really appreciated the opportunity that the state gave us in this four-part training, and I, I think that we hopefully have brought home information and, and hopefully some new skills that'll make it worthwhile. I'd like to start off just to see if the board has any questions on the waterfront project. I, uh, gave you all a memo after we had our meeting with Jim Abdullah from, um, AEDA, our engineer. We mentioned at the last meeting that we had done some projected costs based upon, uh, changes in the project plans, and we met with Jim, I think it was actually the next morning, and found out that, I guess as most people have found out recently, construction costs have just increased tremendously, particularly steel, and steel sheet piling has always been the largest part of the project. And so, uh, what we decided to do at the meeting that we had with Jim and representatives from the village, and, uh, also David McClellan from the Department of State, was to kind of go with Plan A and Plan B approach. Plan A being continue to solicit grant funds to make up the, the funding gap in the project. We're looking at a Department of Transportation grant, possibly. Um, I know the mayor and Trustee Huprow have plans to try to get a member item, uh, from the state legislature from Senator Little, and we're, we're looking at all the possibilities to try to fill that gap. Plan B is to look at, another look at the design, to see if there might be a, a less expensive way of achieving the waterfront goals of improvements at the boat launch, a scenic pier, and a, a linear park, a pathway between them. And so that, that is what is happening now. Uh, does the board have any questions on that that I can answer?
Board.
What is in here, though, the, um, the recommendations, one, two, and three, that's still current, correct?
Those are, yes, okay. The, the recommendations that were in there, um, we went ahead and looked at, uh, the existing grant application, the one that was awarded in 2002, we put a budget together on that, submitted it to Parks and Recreation, that's in the works. Right now, we're, we're working on the archaeological study requirements to get that all satisfied. Uh, we submitted the two grant applications, and happy reports, here they are, one to the Department of State, one to Parks and Recreation, and if anyone would like to take a look at these, I'll, I'll be glad to, um, give them to you after the meeting. Those went in to be sure that were included in this next round of funding, and, um, we are continuing to look at other funding options. So there's no change in that.
Were they hard to fill off with the grant?
They were lots of fun. The, um, the, the hardest part was just getting a hand on all the different things that had to be pulled together. I finally had everything in my hands about five days, I think, before I had to mail, I had to mail them before we went to Albany. That was a great moment. When I had everything, it was just write it, put it together, that, that was the, getting it all together was the fun part, definitely. And, of course, they both are different, and, you know, the two agencies, it came as a great surprise to the Department of State to hear that their application wasn't the same as Parks and Recreation, but they're very, very different because of the different purposes the two agencies try to serve, so.
And any other questions on, on the project?
Super. And, uh, just briefly, now that the grants are finished, I just wanted to give you a bit of an idea what I'm going to be looking at in July. Phil and I are going to put together a final report on the Quality Community Training. And, um, my hope is that after we hold our interviews on July 12th with our consultants, that village board and the steering committee will be able to have a joint meeting to hear the report on the, the quality communities, to listen to our main street, uh, approach. This is, it's a four-point approach that they gave us some training in, and kind of set a plan for the future. By the way, I, I want to echo Trustee Jefferson's comments in terms of the Fourth of July celebration. I was, I had just jotted this down. One of the four points in the main street approach to revitalizing your downtown is promotion, and, you know, having events to draw people in and get them to come back and spend their money. And I was saying to, to Phil and, and, uh, Trustee Huprow this morning, we could schedule 20 events and never come close to the value that the Fourth of July has. So on behalf of everyone involved in the Quality Community process, thank you to Trustee Huprow, the village staff, the sponsors, and, and all the committee volunteers, because it is, it is a rare opportunity, and, and it is so well-known throughout the North Country. We found that Plattsburgh was telling all the other quality communities about Rouse's Point being the place to be in the North Country on the Fourth of July, so that was really nice. Um, we're meeting with Jim Abdullah from, um, AEDA on, on Thursday morning to go over the, any additional costs they might incur as looking at this redesign. Uh, they're not, of course, doing design for actual construction, but just a different look at the project, so we want to talk to them about that. And then the plan is to submit that to Empire State Development with the remaining monies that are available. And, uh, as I said, I, I wanted to just give you a quick, quick update on that, uh, main street grant that I gave you some information on at the last meeting. Phil and I were very disappointed to find out in Albany that is not available to municipalities, that has to go to a, um, nonprofit agency, which ended up starting a bit of a brouhaha down in Albany, but that's a different story. And, uh, what I'm doing now is trying to make contact with a not-for-profit that might be able to act as a pass-through for us if we do want to go ahead and, and submit that application. So I'm going to contact Rural Preservation and the, uh, Community Energy Services. There's a woman there that Phil has had some conversations with that might be able to assist us in that. And, uh, I'm also hoping to actually get out this month and, and introduce myself and the Quality Community Process to all the businesses on Main Street, so that, you know, let them know that, that we're working and where we stand in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a pretty sophisticated report.
Thank you, John. That was one of the slams we took.
Mike, you got anything? Mike?
Nothing.
Open the meetings in public at this time? Anybody wishing to address the board, may do so.
I've got a quick question, uh, because of the construction, I've been taking Pratt Street a little more often, and I've noticed a few times that people coming particularly from the north seem to think that's a three-way stop there. Has there been any accidents there, is there any?
Close calls, but boy, that's a bad corner. You know, we should consider putting a stop sign up there.
No, it's only a, probably just a temporary problem, but.
Same highway. You already got a stop sign on, on the opposite way, all the places you don't have Pratt.
They come rolling through on 276 figuring people are going to stop, and it's like, well.
Yeah, if you got the right way, the no- You got the right of way, then all of a sudden they're pulling out in front of you because they think, they think it's three-way.
The only stop sign on Pratt Street there is approval with State Department of Transportation. I don't think they're going to do it for two months.
No.
Two or three months. Can ask, though.
I'm not asking for a sign, I'm just wondering if there's been any of a problem there, because...
Hasn't been, not so far. Not so far. Got it? We're, we adjourn to recess, a recess at 7:31. Oh. Second, I'm sorry. Trustee Penfield, Trustee Huprow. All of you remember?
Aye.
I propose, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.